Tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt my agenda.
A second.
Brian, seconds, uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Jack, could you take roll call vote, please?
You're on mute.
Get that over with the first thing. Councilperson Mundel.
Aye.
Councilperson Arrington.
Aye.
Mayor Boss.
Aye.
Councilperson Beck.
Aye.
Councilperson Urkel.
Aye.
Motion passes.
That motion passes. The first item in today's agenda is a discussion of city staffing and creation of a city personnel committee. Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a means to proactively deal with and avoid potential personnel issues, Lita Bannick, one of our city attorneys, is present tonight with us and will review some similar experience of comparative sized municipalities and offer potential options to address these issues. In previous discussions with Ms. Bannick, council has recognized the need of some form of human resources assistance and is seeking ways to address this concern. This assistance could be provided in several ways, but for the discussion, the initial options to review are the creation of the position of an HR director, provide guidance on personnel matters. The advantage of this option is the city has a full-time experienced employee to provide HR service, and this employee could fulfill other duties depending on their skill set. Or the city could take the approach of retaining a professional independent HR professional on an as-needed basis to deal with personnel matters and policies as they arise. This advantage of this alternative is it provides time to gauge the point when this position would need to become full-time or other means to augment the above alternatives or other recommendations result from the discussion of this matter. To examine these matters, the discussion will focus on the HR position and review an update of the city's personnel policy. In addition, and directly related to these items, there will be a proposal for the formation of a personnel committee composed of the mayor and one city councilperson. This committee could review matters relating to policies and practices, compensation and benefits, labor relations and collective bargaining, employee relations and staffing and organizational structure and vice to counsel on these issues. Basic outline for the initial steps to move forward with this proposition would be to revise the city's personnel policy to update the policies to comply with current workplace regulations and add any additional clarification as to the needs for employee issues to be filed and processed and forward recommendations necessary to achieve the committee's proposals to the city council for consideration. Staff is requesting discussion and direction from city council as to the next steps relating to this proposal. This time, I will turn it over to Ms. Bannick, and she will give us, give us a review of some things that she's found and offer some recommendations for consideration.
Yeah, so, and if anybody has any, am I muted? No, okay. If anybody has any questions, you know, feel free to put them to me, too. I think we kind of, we talked about this a little bit last time about some of the possibilities in this, um, this space. Um, this, this memo outlined a few possibilities, um, you know, providing another position of an HR director. That's kind of the first bullet point here. I would say that in cities your size, I don't often see that. Um, when I see a city taking on an additional HR position in your size, what it usually looks like is an assistant city administrator that can take on tasks from the administrator. Um, some H, basic HR functions, but in cities your size, primarily the HR function is housed with the city administrator, kind of the upper level reporting, which is, you know, where there have been some concerns here, um, previously, and we've, we've talked about in the past. Um, does anybody have any questions about that? Um, kind of creating an, an assistant director position or a HR director position? I don't think, you know, in cities your size, from what I've seen, there's not enough work for somebody to be a full-time HR director.
Yeah, I'd, I'd agree with that. Yeah, I don't think we have nearly enough employees to, to justify that.
Nope, no, I agree. Um, so the, I think the one position that I see most frequently, again, the assistant admini-, city administrator would be on the table there. Um, the, the second option, um, so the second bullet point talks about um, retaining a professional independent HR on an as-needed basis. So what this would look like, and we see this as well, what this would look like is either, you know, Jack, uh, as, as city administrator would maintain the primary, um, he would field the complaints. You know, the, when you're thinking about personnel matters, you need to think of where the complaints are issued, where they're investigated and handled and whatnot for those upper level, um, concerns. Um, so in the second approach, which, like I said, I see often, the city administrator would still be that, that primary reporting mechanism, the reporting avenue, unless it was a problem with the city administrator and then you could go to council or some, you know, some other um, reporting, but I see that very frequently. Um, and then Jack would decide on an as-needed basis of whether, um, to con- to obtain outside consulting, whether that be through a consultant, um, a consultant like a, you know, you hire an entity and pay on an hourly basis. Fractional HR services is what it's called. I'm familiar with quite a few different entities that provide these services. Again, these would be on an hourly basis. Um, or, uh, another alternative there is to use a, like a law firm, My Services, um, Employment Services, um, to deal with those matters. And, you know, you could also use your attorney services, um, until you would find or make a relationship with a HR consultant. The, while I am more than happy to handle, uh, these HR issues, the concern that comes up is cost. You know, what are you paying on an hourly basis? Um, and whether you can find high-end services through an HR consultant um, that would, wouldn't cost as much. Um, now, the analysis there is that certainly you can find HR consultants that will charge less than my private hourly rate, but, um, you know, wouldn't be as when there's a public rate involved, you know, the, the, the difference between the two hourly rates not might, might not be as significant. But so that's kind of the second option, maintaining, um, the city administrator as the main reporting mechanism and then seeking outside help where necessary. Um, so those are kind of, from a personnel standpoint, those are really the options out there. Are any questions about either one of those? And then I have a little bit of additional discussion about, you know, what, what we can do. Have you all had a chance to review the proposed bylaws? I didn't check. Was that included within this packet?
Yes.
Okay. That, that can help ease the strain, too. But any, any questions about kind of what the position options are?
Not so much a question, but I guess to voice my opinion, uh, I'm more a fan of option number two, uh, having Jack do most of it over the light lifting and, uh, consult with the city attorney until such time that we engage with, uh, HR consultant if we even need the, have the need to, if we just
Yeah.
have the city attorney available once a month for two hours for employees to talk to if they have any grievances to bring up or anything. Uh, and if it, uh, something needs ex- escalate or services, more services are needed, then well, no, but this would at least be a, a conservative option and to test the waters with how much HR staffing per se would be needed.
Mm-hmm.
Can you hear anyone else?
Lita and I had some discussions this morning, and one of the things that we both brought up and agreed to is that if this is the course to be taken, this option number two, several other things need to be done. Uh, I think we need to, the first thing to do is look at our personnel policy. Revised it, make sure it's current with all the workplace regulations and laws. Uh, our process for the grievances is, is pretty good in there. I think maybe we need to add some things to make sure that everybody understands where you go to, and as importantly, I think it's necessary that we involve training of not just department heads, but all staff on these matters. And everybody understands the process and how it would work if there's a grievance or an issue, so that there's no misunderstanding of the steps to be taken to address it.
Yep, that's, that's exactly right. And, and I think that, you know, with this component, another part that we talked about is number one, getting those, it's been a significant amount of time since um, you've looked at your personnel policies. So getting the personnel policies in order, making sure that the reporting structures are appropriate and make sense, making sure that there's documentation required. Um, and then I, I suggest, um, and, and to avoid additional situations in the future, training. Um, so training on, you know, once we have that personnel policy done, and once we have those reporting mechanisms complete, um, we figure out, or we, we have a training, number one, for the upper level management and the city administrator, so that everybody's on board, everybody understands um, how that, how reporting and how concerns will be handled within the city. Um, and that'd be something that I'd be happy to do, to lead, if it made sense. Um, just going through the handbook, what are the procedures? How do we handle them? Um, the other, the other training that I think, as Jack indicated, would be just a general um, department-wide training, not necessarily for supervisors, but making sure that employees know where complaints should go and that they'll be taken seriously, things like that. And I think, unless anybody else has any additional comments there, that is a nice segue into the, uh, personnel committee.
Any other comments now? All right, proceed.
So then the, the, the final part of this then, and what can eat, ease not only the city administrator's burden um, and ease in creation of this, this personnel policy and make things go, these edits go really much faster. Um, we, I would propose, and we've drafted an ordinance as well as bylaws for creation of a committee, a, a personnel committee that can handle some of these matters so that we don't have to meet, you know, we can meet, um, much more easily to get things done on a, on a monthly basis. Um, so if you look at these bylaws, I'm just pulling them out here. Um, the, what we have proposed within these bylaws is they can make recommendations regarding, and remember, too, this committee will not have the ultimate author, decision-making authority, but they'll be able to make some recommendations, um, and do, you know, the bulk of the research behind things. Um, so the first is make recommendations regarding personnel policies and a review of the handbook a minimum of every two years, starting immediately. Um, we've proposed that they, another part of this, of, of the, um, work that I have done with the city is that, that has come clear is the need to have a consistent mechanism for performance reviews. Um, so I indicated in here, one of the possibilities of this personnel committee could be overseeing that review process. Um, the third would be making recommendations for organizational structure and staffing levels. Should it become necessary to make a new position, this, uh, personnel committee could kind of have, be doing the bulk of the research and then report back to the entire council on what their findings are of whether and what position, uh, would be appropriate. Um, labor negotiations, they could oversee them. I don't, I don't know that there's a great need here. Jack could talk to that more, but to the extent that there would be need, um, that this personnel committee could function in that way. Um, and then I also didn't, don't think there's a great need here, but, but just to give them, you know, it's easiest to start by giving access, um, and then you can, um, should you need it, so you don't have to do a bylaw change later. Um, and it's access over, including in determining what benefits will be offered, medical, dental, life, things like that. Again, I don't anticipate that being a big need, but, um, should the city need assistance in that realm, it can make, this personnel committee will make things happen much more quickly because you don't have to have meetings and notice and whatnot, and can have discussions with a smaller subset to, again, take to the larger. And I see these, we see these committees often, and you, in the, um, the city is currently using this for their finance. They have a finance committee. So that's the other component of this, too, which isn't really related to this discussion, is we uh, propose to clean up the ordinance with regards to what the finance committee's duties are. And that's just because we're already dealing with statutory notice, so let's clean that one up as well.
Okay, so this is, um, pretty much what we discussed last time, uh, wi- with the changes incorporated. Um, does, does anyone have any comments or questions on on the personnel committee, uh, or the ordinance, the bylaws? No questions? So we're ready, ready to send this to council?
Well, who's going to be the other person? Or is that going to be decided at council?
For, for, on, on the committee?
Yes.
Um, what I've thought about and what, uh, I'd like to do is appoint Shelley uh, as the council rep, if Shelley's okay with that. But we don't need to do that tonight. I mean, that, that's kind of after we get the ordinance done and all that. The, the, the first thing it'll do is set up the committee, so.
Yeah, I'm totally fine with that. Thank you.
Yeah, just, well, as long as she has the time, I guess that's the only concern I have. It's her, she doesn't have daytimes available as much as the rest others.
I work, uh, ten to, well, eight-thirty to two, Monday through Friday. So, um, I do have the time.
Okay.
And then working with the school system, I'm pretty familiar with chain of command and all that. So hopefully, maybe I can, uh, make a difference.
Yep, my, my, my thought was of, of the five of us, Shelley is the only one that's actively employed in a, in a bigger organization. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I think that brings perspective, um, that the, the rest of us may not have, so.
Thank you.
So we're ready to go to council. Any other questions on this?
Steve, we can bring this to council on the March twenty-second meeting. We will have to run the ten-day notice in the paper. Uh, we'll have to get that in the deadline, so we can have that scheduled at the March twenty-second council meeting. In, in the meantime, I'll work with Lita on some, um, the details of the structure of formatting some of the internal discussions that we've gone over tonight, and, uh, we'll, uh, also get some indication to go on what we need to do on the, uh, personnel policy revision.
Um, does it make sense to also, uh, start making inquiries into, um, look at the HR consultant, if that's a route we want to take? You know, finding, finding out what, what's available and cost structure and things like that?
We, we can certainly run that parallel to all these discussions and actions.
Okay. Anything else on this? Well, I'm glad we're, uh, keeping progress and keeping this moving, so, uh, so we'll see at council on the twenty-second. Thanks, Lita.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so our next item is the Midco franchise agreement. Um, I assume you may be sticking around for that, too. Lita?
So I, Jack and I had a very brief discussion on that earlier. And unfortunately, I mean, I'm happy to stick around if you think it would be beneficial. Unfortunately, I'm not familiar with the laws and statutes underlying it, so my participation would be relaying it back to Chris for assistance.
Probably makes better sense to have Jack do that directly, then.
Yeah, yeah, that, from a fiscal perspective, that makes sense.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thanks, Lita. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Hey, Jack?
In nineteen eighty-nine, the city entered into a fifteen-year cable franchise agreement with U.S. Cable Company. That agreement expired on July fifth, two thousand and four, but remained in place by continuing resolution. Negotiations with U.S. Cable took nearly one year to complete. And on June twenty-first, two thousand and six, city council approved ordinance number two oh six, approving a franchise agreement with U.S. Cable. The term of this agreement was fifteen years, and it is set to expire on July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. U.S. Cable's franchise was sold to Midcontinent Communications in two thousand and eleven. The sale was approved by city council on September twenty-first, two thousand and eleven, with approval of resolution two zero one one dash forty-six, allowing and approving the assignment of the cable franchise and system operated by U.S. Cable of Coastal Texas LP to Midcontinent Communications. Terms and conditions of the provisions of the U.S. Cable franchise transferred to Midco. On January the eleventh, twenty twenty-one, council approved and authorized the city attorney to proceed with negotiations with Midco for a franchise agreement extension. Initial contact has been made with Midco by cit-, by the city attorney. Midco has furnished the city its standard franchise agreement, which is included in your packet, as attachment to and has expressed and seems to be open to proposals from the city that are within the statutory and FCC requirements for contract amendments. Council may wish to explore some of the following in their negotiations with Midco. The term of the agreement, uh, the current term was fifteen years. We probably want to look at that as a ten-year agreement. Uh, as a matter of flexibility, things change fast in this business, and, uh, in ten years, we may not even recognize the landscape. Uh, the franchise fee, which the statutory limit of the FCC regulation limit is five percent of gross revenues, is that what we want to keep? That's what we currently have. And a discussion of the current peg fees. Uh, the proposed agreement allows for discussion on this. Currently, we charge forty-five cents per customer per month. We have nine hundred and twenty-six video subscribers, so this generates about five thousand dollars a year. What we've allocated this money for was the actual payment over a period of time for the improvements we made to our recording and broadcast capabilities back in twenty sixteen. Uh, so even though we've already paid it off, we're using this money to make ourselves home. Uh, we also want to consider increasing the liability insurance that's specified in the current policy. This is based on the attorney's recommendation. Uh, there's a density clause in the current agreement. It specifies if there's more than twenty-five houses per mile and that area is contiguous to an area that has service, then Midco would provide service to that area. I didn't see that in the new proposed agreement, but that's something we probably would like to try to get in there if we can. Uh, there's two clauses in the initial agreement or the current agreement, it's an emergency alert and use clause. Uh, it's seven point oh two and fifteen point one. If those are still available, those might be useful things and good service to the public to have in the agreement. And then any other assurances or contract clauses as council may wish to direct the city attorney to pursue in his negotiations with Midco. So the city attorney to begin these negotiations need council inputs as to the amendments or modification as to the proposed agreement.
So what comments do we have now, Suzanne?
Well, my only comment is, um, I don't want to increase any, a lot of fees on them that will end up in, being increased to our residents. So, um, because, I mean, we use Midco, and I know how much we pay, and, um, so the increase of fees, we, we just need to try to limit it. But because whatever we charge them, they're going to just put it against the residents, and I think that's unnecessary.
Un- under these two things, Suzanne, there would be no increase in those fees unless we wanted to raise those peg fees, which is a monthly charge per month subscriber.
Yeah, and I do have a question. Do you know off the top of your head what, um, the insurance um, increase, the, the, uh, attorney, we thought we should ask for because, and why?
Well, for one thing, the, these current limits in the old agreement were negotiated fifteen years ago. Uh, it's probably wise to increase our coverage on this in the event that there is some type of a lawsuit. As to the final amounts, that's yet to be determined, and, uh, that'll be part of the negotiations.
So, so it's basically just updated?
That's correct.
So I, I, I really don't like sounding, um, too dumb, but what kind of lawsuit would we get? Would the city get regarding Midco? I mean, when they, people just sue Midco, why would they sue the city? I'm, I'm just confused there.
Well, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm no attorney, but generally when there's a lawsuit and there's a number of relationships involved, it's that deep pockets approach, is that all entities are sued so that they have more people to go after to collect?
Well, Jack, isn't it more towards their insurance that they're required to have in case they get sued?
That's correct, too.
Yeah, so, so it's not so much protecting the city as making sure that they have enough insurance.
Yeah, and, and in the event they didn't have enough insurance, as Steve points out, Suzanne, then we would be the next in line.
You know, if they're, if they're digging a new line and rupture a gas main and cause fatality or something, you know, it's strange things happen, so. But I, 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 I think it, I think that aspect is probably going to be just kind of academic when it gets down to it, those. So. Any other thoughts?
The only thing I like, Jack, is like you said, that ten-year instead of fifteen, because things change from year to year, so I think that ten-year would be a good deal. You know, don't, don't wait fifteen years, because
Yeah.
you know, you know, like I said, year to year, things change.
No, I, I, I agree, Tim, and, and, and this is a business that's constantly changing, and, uh, you know, technological advances may render this agreement almost null and void in ten years, too, so. I think that, uh, and that, that's the term that they recommend. Uh, older agreements were the fifteen years, but the newer ones are on the ten-year.
Uh, Jack, this attachment to where the franchise agreement that they presented, is this just a boilerplate from them? Or is that what is in front of us that we are considering?
That's the boilerplate that we're starting out from for the negotiations. And if, if you look, and I also included franchise agreements at Cambridge and Assanaham. They both have Midco. There's some basic differences, but they're fairly well similar to those two. Uh, they included a few other things in there. In some of theirs, it was like our original, when there were some build-out things that had to be done. I think for the most part, those have been satisfied here. That's why our original agreement was much different than what was presented as their recom- recommended agreement.
Okay, so I, I just see a couple of things in it, uh, number seven, tutorial area involved. And it talks about, unless there are a minimum of twenty-five homes per cable mile as measured, et cetera. And number eight, line it, line extension. Grantee shall not be required to install service to any property within the limits of the city boundaries if the closest technical feasible tap on the cable system is greater than one hundred fifty feet. Um, I wonder if we could, i- i- in order to increase the mile residence with access to internet, if those, some of those numbers could be reduced?
We can always bring that up, uh, that may be their formula though for their break-even point or profit and loss, but, uh, I think that those definitely need to be in there. Also in your packet is our official service area map, which is just a piece of paper with some brown, tan and yellow colors on it. One of the things that I think we definitely need to require in our agreement is Midco furnish us with an up-to-date service area map and also an up-to-date location of facilities map. We need this from a public work standpoint, because if we have an emergency dig and we don't have time to do locates, then at least we have some idea of where some of these services are. Uh, and it'll help us in our execution of doing some waterline repairs or some of our other utility repairs.
Yeah, I think in your agreement that I read through that we currently have, they're supposed to provide those to the city yearly upon request.
They, they do, but that, that was the, the one thing that we had some difficulties with with Midco was providing these maps, and then when they did, what you see is the most up-to-date and the most detailed one that they gave us.
Yeah. So, but just looking at, uh, how we can use the contract to increase some internet for some people. And the other thing I noticed, um, in section, section six, two franchise fee, it states three percent in there and not five.
Yeah, that's, that, that's, that's one thing that I think that we want to keep that at five. Everybody's keeping it at five. So that, that's one thing I would propose it, it being increased to five. Just to give you an idea on the twenty-five homes per mile. I don't know if anybody's familiar with where Tim lives, but Tim lives on two hundred and forty-first and Delwood Acres and two hundred and first, and that's where Stut Street is also. Those two streets have fourteen homes in a half a mile, so it, it doesn't take a lot to hit that twenty-five homes. The key thing is that these twenty-five homes per cable mile have to be contiguous to an existing. So those are some of the things I'd like to discuss with them, too.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the one thing I was going to bring up is, I mean, the biggest complaint I, I think we get regarding the cables, the fact that we have areas that don't have cable. Tim's neighborhood's one, and so, I mean, the question I have is, I know we talked a bit specifically about Delwood Acres before and, and and it, it's shown as designed, but what's it take for them to get it built? I mean, it was already in our agreement right now, correct?
Correct.
So, so does it take us trying to enforce the agreement to get them to do these installations or?
Well, I think part, part of the discussions could involve having them provide us with an annual schedule of these areas that do qualify and meet their extension requirements. So that they will give that to us and, you know, provide us with a plan on their next step in the provision of service to these unserved areas, though they do meet their extension requirements.
What, what year is this map?
Two thousand and sixteen.
Do we know if they installed any cable anywhere?
They, we, we do know they've installed cable up in Meadows of Fish Lake, which is up in the very north corner of that. They're in the process now, I talked to installing cable to that subdivision that's just off Klondike, I believe it's Edison Street. It's off the big section of Klondike on the east side. And I think they've got some cable in your subdivision now, don't they, Tim?
Yes, they, yes, they do.
So they do, Midco is in your neighborhood now?
Well, Midco's on, in Wild, on, uh, Wild Rice and on twenty-two, but not actually in the neighborhood here.
So, okay, so they haven't done any hookups there?
No, 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 no hookups, but they're on either side, that's what I said, I, you know, I, I don't, I just don't, you know, fourteen homes, they said they can't do it, you know?
Jack, can we? Have, have we looked at this map in any kind of detail to either identify, you know, neighborhoods that meet that criteria? Um, that either aren't marked as to, to be designed or or aren't currently serviced? Is there something we could do there?
Uh, we can, and I've looked at a few of those areas. One of them is the area off Wild Rice Drive, two hundred and ninth avenue. It's that subdivision just to the east of Wild Rice. That subdivision does meet the criteria for the excess of more than twenty-five homes per mile. Some of those other areas in the light yellow, which show is no service. I haven't looked at any of those, but we can certainly, it wouldn't take long to come up with some that we think that qualify for that and it should be included in their expansion plans.
So I call it Clarence's Development, is that what you're talking about?
That's correct, Clarence Andersons.
That's, that, that, that development happened within this agreement time, didn't it? Or was it before?
No, it happened, well, it happened before two thousand and six. So, uh, I don't know why it was left out. That's the area that I get the most complaints on about no cable service. And with no cable service now essentially comes the complaint about no internet service, and they kind of go hand in hand.
Well.
Extensions are now.
Right, and, and, and I think to be clear, I think, I, I think the benefit we get out of them having cable in these neighborhoods is obviously they'll have internet. Which is, you know, more and more pressing issue. I, I really think we need to get it in the agreement that, you know, Delwood Acres, Clarence's Development, whatever these things are, that these, they need to be in the agreement, and then I'm fine with having a schedule, I don't expect it to be done overnight, but that these areas need to get served.
I think that's, I think that's a very valid point, and it's one that, why we're having this discussion, so we can give Chris direction on what to bring up in these negotiations.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sure Midco is going to bring up, as they have in the past, is that, well, that's a big cost, we have to pass it on to our, all of our users, you know, so. Uh, quite honestly, i- i- if it comes to that, I, I'd just assume either reduce or waive the franchise fee in order to get them to, to get better coverage in the city. Cause, cause I, I've never liked this franchise fee, because it's just another tax on the people that use it, so. That benefits the whole city, it just doesn't benefit them. So I, I, I think this is our opportunity to really address these nagging issues, and we, we've had these for fifteen years.
If, if, if any other council member knows of an area that's underserved or unserved, please let me know if you've gotten any complaints. We'll make sure those are added to the list, too, as far as the discussion for the new contract.
Jack, maybe Brian, you remember, didn't, didn't we years ago kind of asked the residents to let us know? Because I know we had this discussion at council, and I think Midco came in, and I think we made a comment to the public. I thought, I thought they got, there was residents that got back to us, maybe not.
I don't recall asking the residents, though we maybe have put it out. But I definitely know Midco did come to that council meeting. And I remember they had said that they had identified an area in the city that they were going to put cable in. And two months later, they put it in Whispering Aspen. So, I think they put it down two forty-first, but they stopped it short of, uh, right where it goes from asphalt to gravel, because Julie Lux lives down that road and she can't get it. And it's only, uh, half a block away, if that.
Yeah, yeah, on the map, it's showing no coverage, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's Sunfish, right?
Uh, two forty-first.
Okay.
Going, going around.
Skylark, Steve.
Skylark, yeah.
Skylark.
Skylark, I don't know why I thought Sunfish, okay.
Well, and you know, in, in that situation now, we've had that, uh, development, uh, there's only, I think, five or six lots up there, but there's been some further subdivision beyond that point, so that's one we could look at, too, maybe make a case for, because there are new residents and new potential service customers there.
Yeah.
I think as a city, our goal should be everyone have access. I mean, it's understandable when there's, you know, there's two houses on Klondike or Beaverbrook, you know, how, how do you get service to them, you know, they're a mile away? The, the, the economics, we can understand that. But some of these developments where there's homes and, uh, we got so many people working from home, and I'm sure it's going to continue after the pandemic, too, you know, so. I, I think this is our opportunity to put the pressure on them to get cable out there, which is going to bring in internet, so.
The only comment that I have is, um, we have so many students that are, you know, working or, you know, doing school from home online and you know, regardless if you live in a development or you live, you know, like, uh, back off of a dirt road or whatever, everybody should be able to have internet service. I mean, it's twenty twenty-one, you know? It's, it's not rocket science, I mean, they can, they can run lines to these people.
Well, ex- except they can, but if it's a half mile, it might be a hundred thousand dollars to get a line in, you know? You know, it, it, it just, just for that one service, so I think there's limits to that, but again, I, I, I think the goal should be, our goal should be that, that everyone, everyone has access and reliable access.
I, I, I agree.
So is there anything else that, uh, we want Jack to pass on?
I think that's a good list, do you? Do you have a good idea of what to pass on, Jack?
I think so, we've got a good list here to go off of.
Okay.
So, Jack, did we also cover number five?
No, number five kind of leads into a lot of that, though, too. This is a
All right.
this is a different portion of the, essentially the same discussion. If we're ready to move into number five now, it's kind of a continuation. Item number five is our internet service discussion. The East Bethel EDA has been discussing ways to improve and extend internet service in the city. City staff and the EDA have been working with Jekyll Hider, Annapolis County Regional Economic Development, AC RED, over the past year to explore ways to accomplish this goal. Ms. Hider resigned her position effective today, and our efforts may need to be restarted or delayed until a person hired for this position can be brought up to date, is where we are in this process. Recognizing our past dependence on this position as a facilitator for our internet service improvement goals, the city may need to become more proactive in our role as a driver of this project. To do this could require the service of a professional assistant who specializes in this field. In addition to the needs of existing business requirements for reliable high-speed internet, this service is critical to market the city, viable location, personal investment prospects. As a corresponding demand, the increase in the number of residents working from home, the rise in the number of distance learning schools, the growth of home occupations, and the surge of personal use of the internet for communications and internet and entertainment makes internet service essential for most residents in the city. Primary issue with access to internet service in the city is the number of residents that live in low-density areas. The number of homes per mile is a determining factor for the feasibility of service extension improvements. Solutions to provisions of and accessibility of internet service will vary with neighborhood density characteristics. There is no one-size-fits-all plan for the city. A range of alternatives will need to be explored and evaluated to develop means for providers who offer this service, whether it be hard-wired fiber or cable, line-of-sight Wi-Fi, or new technological advances in global satellite service. Staff is recommending continued discussion of broadband internet service relating to the function of the city for extensions to underserved and unserved areas, as well as improvements to existing service users. This discussion would include the development of a broadband plan for the city through the use of consulting services and AC RED assistance. The discussion of the potential need for use of city funds to match grants or provide gap financing for service extension and/or improvements to existing service. An evaluation of new technologies for broadband and its options to fiber as a delivery format for service. Staff also recommends that council consider the submission of a request for proposals for the development of an internet service plan for the city. This plan will identify areas that could potentially be served, existing areas that require service upgrades, funding sources, city cost participation, and coordination of the providers to partner their efforts and resources to implement the plan. The RFP could be provided, prepared by staff and submitted to council for approval. Should a contract be awarded for this work, there would be no unbudgeted costs for this stage of the process and the plan. So, we discussed this at the EDA on several occasions in our last discussion. There was some consensus on just testing the waters to see what sources were available to help us put together a plan. Work with the county at the same time, but due to the loss of this position with the county, I know they're moving very quickly on replacing that position and hiring that, but this person is going to be need to brought up to speed, and I think that we need to have a little bit more, uh, influence and take some of the reins on this and, and drive this project ourselves, too, because as we previously discussed, internet service is becoming critical for a number of factors, and, uh, I think we need to do whatever we can to provide options to the residents of the city to have access to the service.
So, Jack, um, did the county, uh, provide any kind of, um, schedule or, or when they expect to have that position filled again?
Uh, very soon. I know that Julie Lux is on the interview panel, and I think they hope to have the position filled by the end of this month, latest.
Yeah, well, that's good. So what, what do you suggest we do in the interim to, to get going?
I, I would like to actually reach out to this Blanding Foundation, the one that did a report for us back at the EDA a couple of years ago, to several consultants we've worked with in the past to see what firms are out there that have this expertise and just prepare a request for proposals, basically outlining what our needs are, what we're looking for, and ask them to give us a cost for developing a plan to make that happen. Just because we get a cost doesn't mean we have to do it, but I think it's a good start in evaluating what our other forms of assistance are. And, you know, AC RED has been very good to work with, they've done lots for us so far. But, uh, I think it's time we started accelerating the pace and maybe make this a priority project for the city.
Okay, thoughts?
Well, if we did get a consultant, say, within the next three months, just hypothetically, we're still in negotiations with, uh, our cable contract. That consultant may have particular views that, uh, we should be looking into as to what we can add to or negotiate for in our contract that we just don't know.
That, that would be part of it, Brian.
Yeah, there could be an asset there.
I, I think I'd agree, uh, except that, from past experience, I know we, we can't include uh, anything internet in that cable franchise agreement. Um, it seems odd since it's the same provider, but, um, we're, we're kind of banned from, from requiring anything that way. We're certainly going to have a discussion with them, but.
Yeah. Well, maybe it wouldn't be called internet, but they could have input.
Yeah. I thi- I think too, Jack, you know, uh, letting midco know, you know, what, what we want to do on, you know, with this broadband, you know, what our plans are, that, that, they may provide some insight, so. I think, I think that's maybe, maybe where you're getting at, Brian, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and actually the current providers in this area would also be contacted in terms of where they might be able to direct us to people who could provide this assistance to us. We reach out to them and several others to see what we could do to find somebody that really had some expertise and had some experience in this and working with a community such as ours to divide a plan that was feasible and one that was clear-cut and coordinated and outlined the steps we need to take to achieve the goals.
Any other questions for Jack? So I think, uh, I don't see any objection from Jack, uh, letting Jack proceed. Uh, we're not encouraging any costs, so. All right. Anything?
I got that one.
All right.
So.
Bethel Haunted Trails Park.
We've discussed this several times, we've sent an agreement to the Bethel City Council. It's come back twice with some questions. Uh, some of the questions were very legitimate and some of the proposed changes, uh, are very good. The city, the city attorney has reviewed the changes. There's an attachment three with a red line proposed agreement that I would recommend that we approve as the final to send to them. I've had some conversations with the city of Bethel here in the past, last week and today. I think that they'd be in favor of signing this the way it is. Uh, the, the, the key thing with the proposal that you have in front of you, you do have the red line changes. Uh, there is one other change that we would recommend and that would be on item number four, which is noise. That should be stricken because our code of ordinances does allow amplified outdoor entertainment venues for nonprofit organizations that can happen four times per year. So, this would be consistent with our code and I think that's one of the, the issues that Bethel had was they wondered what our codes were and I told them where to look. I said, thing most probably affect them if they wanted outdoor entertainment, they had to outdoor entertainment permit. If they build anything, they'd have to comply with all their building codes. They had a few objections to this and then I posed a question to them. Now, that's standard for anybody that owns property in the city where it's a individual business or even a nonprofit. Uh, so, uh, I would propose that we accept the red line changes that are in your packet and strike number four and send this to the city of Bethel for their approval for the memorandum of agreement for the operation of their facility known as the Bethel Nature Trails in the city of East Bethel.
Hey, Jack, and I agree with that. Uh, in number six, it references park. I thought, I thought we were removing all the park references.
We are, we'll make that change, thank you, Steve, for the catch.
You'll think. Are there any other, uh, thoughts or changes? Okay. Well, Jack, you'll, you'll communicate that to Bethel and if they're okay with that, we can sign next council meeting then.
That's correct. They, they meet on the second and fourth Thursdays, so I'll see when they're ready, but we'll go ahead and have this on the council meeting on the eighth and we'll sign it and then give it to them for their signature.
All right. Very good. Is there anything else tonight? Suzanne?
Um, yeah, I just thought of something regarding the broadband. Um, I know the state has these grants programs, um, by that broadband. Um, it's broadband something, but they give cities millions of dollars. And I, I was looking, I looked it up earlier and East Bethel wasn't even listed on there, but Bethel is listed on there. Um, but I, I just wanted to bring that up as maybe we could get a grant to get broadband, you know, help get us broadband in here. I don't know, it's just an idea.
No, that, that, that's a good, that's a good point, Suzanne. That would be one of the functions of the consultant, if we went that route. They would be very knowledgeable or need to be very knowledgeable on financing mechanisms for this, including grant programs. The grant program we're most familiar with is the DED Department of Employment and Economic Development. They do have quite a bit of money that they put into this. Unfortunately though, most all of their money is not for metro area municipalities. It's for outstate users. If you can see in the, um, blending report that was included in your attachment, they give some examples of funding and none of them are here, but there may be other sources that we're not aware of and that would be one of the listings of the request for proposals is to make sure that whoever looks at this or whoever we would consider for doing it, if we should hire them, would have access and be able to give us indications on where to go for grant funding for this. Because to facilitate the extension of broadband is going to require some city funding. Uh, EDA funding can be used to, if we can justify it as an economic development expense. And I think in most cases we can, especially with the number of home occupations that are out there. But, uh, we'll be seeking grant funding to do this as part of our financing portion of the projects.
Okay. Anything else? Well, if not, uh, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made, second, Jack, you take roll call vote, please.
Councilperson Urkel.
Aye.
Councilperson Mundell.
Aye.
Councilperson Harrington.
Aye.
Councilperson Beck.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye.
Uh, that motion passes and our meeting is adjourned. Uh, good night, everyone.
Have a great night, everyone.